Okay. Well, this is our first time having a work session recorded. And I want to thank Katz for being here tonight to do that. This is a work session to really take a look at potential construction projects and also to talk about bonding and the implementations about that. Still don't think I got that right. And so I'd like to thank Misha from Lancer and Victor and Martin from Skillman and Matt from Stiefel for being here tonight. And first of all, we're going to go through a PowerPoint presentation that will explain further some of the projects and also look at some budgetary items. And then I put together a recommendation and nothing's written in stone on that recommendation. It was really just to kind of say, here's my idea of where we can go and where we could take different projects out of. We have two general obligation bonds that have funds available to us and we also have some past construction bond funds that we could take a look at and see what projects we want to take from them. And so I'd like to just hope we can be productive in our conversations and including, I'm talking to myself, and not go down to too many rabbit holes, but kind of try to, my goal tonight would be to hopefully for the board to provide some guidance and direction in general. And nothing will be voted on tonight, but just give us a roadmap of where we go from here. So I'm going to turn it over to Misha first and we'll get started.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Misha with Lancer Associates. Thank you so much for having us back. So I'll go through a few visuals of what some of the additions and projects might look like or where they might be located on the campus map. Please feel free to stop me at any point in time and ask questions and should be a conversational part. So we will start with a high school graphic and I do have two different options for this piece and it mainly deals with biomedical labs. So what we are looking at is really an addition right over there next to the existing band and choir area. So this is in lighter pink. And then we're looking at a larger addition of the band and choir that's going to be on the east side of the building. So that's choir, larger area, band. There was also opportunity to put a kind of a second story observation deck and practice rooms and storage rooms up there. We also have some offices, storage rooms, also an assembly, assemble room there. And then just keeping a corridor as a connection between the existing building and the new part. In terms of the existing band and choir room, we're looking at potentially adding six more classrooms into the building. So that's going to be different in option two. And then building out the new biomedical labs over in this area here. So those will be kind of larger and they really can be designed to anything that you would want.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I thought there was a question.
I was seeing where the end of the building here.
Yes. So yeah, the existing end of the building is right over in this area. So anything in the darker red is really building addition.
Right. So it's pitch is distinct.
Right.
So trying to utilize the biomedical lab where that would come along. I can kind of see.
Yeah. So yeah, it's kind of cutting into that parking lot. Then also part of that project is going to be an additional parking in the front area, kind of where that grassy area is. And also a much larger added parking on the west side of the building where we added some parking and then kind of expanding that parking even further.
When you say account for underground detention, I know we would be losing some up front. Is that what you're?
No, I think it's kind of also part is that there's probably going to be a underground detention there, so just for cost reasons, so that Skillman had it in there or to kind of account for that as, so that there wouldn't be hopefully too many surprises once construction starts.
In the drainage on the front, I know we had talked about that.
Yes. So kind of taking that soil that's there and trying to redirect it further down that way.
Okay.
And we'll also kind of look into reconfiguring the existing drive there as we will be taking out some of the parking areas in the front of the building. So kind of keeping the existing, kind of where the flagpole is and kind of all that landscape area, but redirecting the traffic a little bit so that you have that drop off area right in front of the front door.
Right.
And then option two is really taking out that addition of biomedical labs and instead renovating the existing band and choir rooms to be lab spaces themselves. And in that, we are only providing some, only three additional classrooms for the high school to be able to use. And these labs are a little bit smaller, just so that we can fit within the existing footprint. That is the main difference between option one and two.
The pink on option two is.
Heavy renovation.
It's already there right now.
Yes, it will be a heavy renovation.
If I look at the band and choir room, that's identical to what that space is going to look like.
Well, yeah, we'll clean it out since.
The band looks a lot bigger already with all those steps out there.
Well, but they're taking the current band and choir and making that to biomedical labs and three additional classrooms.
Correct. Yeah, I kind of like it.
Yeah.
I suppose.
Sure, there's a cost difference too.
Right.
Oh, definitely, yes. And then we also will try to make sure that we are keeping the existing structure in place. There are some load bearing walls, so we will keep those intact and keep the cost.
What are the current band and choir square footages compared to what they're going to?
They are, I believe the band is about 14,000, 1500. What we're looking at with band room is about 4,000. So we are tripling the size, well, really for band and choir. I think it's actually more than that is. Well, band will be able to fit, it's not going to have a basketball court, but it will have enough space for basketball court inside of it just because of what they do in terms of practice and kind of the space allocations and mats that they use there.
So the 18 acres combined?
Yes.
Correct.
That's whole.
You know what else is going to be, have it over, like over two story type, wasn't it?
Yes.
The band or the choir, I don't remember which.
Both of them.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Observation on either side.
Yes.
A deck across everything. Okay, cool. Yeah.
I like that.
I do like, yeah. I do realize this for both of them.
Right. Once we kind of go up, might as well use that since circulation that way.
It seems humongous.
It's, it's much bigger, but it is what a lot of high schools are moving towards. So.
It's roughly the size of your band and choir combined now.
Right.
The band location.
Yes.
What's the square footage of the activity center? The new activity center in fact, what's the square footage?
I wish you hadn't asked me that.
If you give me a second, I can.
That's what course what, 80, 30?
It's not that big.
It's not as big as.
It's smaller than the band and choir addition. It's less than 18,000.
Right.
It's probably.
It is less.
Yes.
And it's also.
That's the visuals.
A shell.
Huh?
It's also a shell as compared to the first cost.
Right.
Correct.
You're talking about the new.
The new activity center.
Activity center is a.
Fieldhouse.
What's, Toronto is going to call it activity center.
I think it's fieldhouse.
We vote on that? We did not, and we did not. Okay.
The signage is coming as fieldhouse.
Okay, all right.
There's your answer.
Anybody's school could use it though, ask them right now.
Oh, yeah.
If we decide not to do band and choir.
Right.
Okay.
And Aaron will tell you that this isn't big enough.
Right.
That's why I was like, I was almost on time, he comes outside.
I really, yeah, I don't really care what he tells me.
I think there are a few barriers of this size around central and southern Indiana. So this.
In our high schools?
Well, like Seymour High School, I guess everyone would be bigger than that.
They're bigger than us.
But to give you an example, you're not out ahead of anybody too much for this.
I think we only got a certain amount of money.
What's that?
Quality of the program.
Do apologize, actually the activity center is larger. It's 23,000. Yes.
23,000 activity centers.
Am I right in the band?
No, the, sorry, the fieldhouse.
Let's get the ones right.
We haven't got any money.
No, no.
Relax.
Deep breaths.
$14.27.
Should we move on to athletics? So what we're looking at are renovations to both the baseball and softball fields. So there's a little bit less work at the existing baseball field, so we will turf the field itself, create a new bullpen for both visitors and the home team, as well as, there's a little bit of a great work that we heard that we need to do in terms of raising parts of the field.
That's quarry. Quarry right, so quarry.
Exactly.
Yeah, I thought that was a lower red.
Then moving south, we're looking at paving that existing gravel, gravel drive so that you've got a nicer entrance there, possibly putting a new restroom concessions building right at the entrance so that you can also create ticketing there and kind of into that area. Possibly creating a new pole barn that you can use for both storage and just quick, really changing rooms for visiting teams. And then for the field itself, we're looking to turf it, new backstops, new sound system, new press box, as well as creating a new concrete walkway all the way around it to connect both to the restrooms and to the existing concessions building.
Should it go all the way through the black field?
Yes.
Out from the orange and all the way up to the new concession stand and then, and then across, that sounds good.
Exactly.
What are you, is it?
Just a walkway.
The walkway all the way.
Okay, where's the press box though?
Right here.
The new press boxes.
Oh, beyond home plate, okay. So that little existing building staying out there, that'll, we got to do something with that, right? Revamp it or?
We definitely can repaint it and things.
It's still a solid building.
Yeah. I think that's also where you're heading for all the athletic lights.
Did you notice the fields are red?
That's just diagrammatic for now. We can talk about colors at a later stage.
Wrong day to say that.
And then the last kind of major kind of additions, renovation portion that I'll be sharing is the junior high school. So in the back of that, the newest addition of the building, we're looking at providing the new band and choir rooms there. And as well as kind of enough classroom space and practice rooms around, that's kind of the main comment that we got from when we met with the teachers, that they needed classroom space in between the two. We'll also have dedicated choir storage with an overhead door there that they use. Also, we will be providing a new set of restrooms on that side of the building just because it seems that the existing activity or multipurpose room doesn't have access to them right now.
One of the things that we saw earlier was the storage in the hallway. Is that still part of this?
It's kind of in the hallway. It's more inside of the band room. We'll still have some of that musical locker rooms there. And then we're still preserving the access into the kitchen there. The outdoor space for the cafeteria is still going to be preserved, maybe closed during construction just because of proximity. And then the other item is that there's a potential to renovate existing band and choir rooms to get you to five classrooms there, as well as some offices and small group instruction over in this area there. These classrooms are kind of similar to what you currently have, which is, I would say is on the smaller side generally, kind of what we typically see in education facilities. But again, we are trying to fit within the confines of load bearing walls and making sure that we're not compromising the structure there. And then you can see kind of this area here is just kind of rewiring the data for the existing, from the new IDF closets there.
The white, the white part is the new gym, right?
Yes, exactly.
Different in it. This is different, we talked about, I thought. I thought we talked about leaving the band and choir up the top and doing something, expanding it out.
That was one of the things that was discussed.
Yeah, turn this into classroom down here so we're not.
I didn't think we ended up that way.
Right. That was, well, I thought by after listening to the band and choir teachers.
Yeah.
They were talking about some alternatives they could do up there that they liked better.
Well, we expanded, we listened to them, they wanted a little bit bigger space. So we made some adjustments to the original plan in terms of extending that, that expansion area out a little bit further. We changed the, the, uh, storage for the band equipment. What else?
We added a lot of practice rooms, a lot of kind of offices, things like that. Just don't believe that you'll get to a good result renovating existing space just because of the height needed in that space and overall you'll get a better product with band and choir moving into the new addition.
For these square footages, that's exactly what we're giving up at band and choir, giving up 6,800 to get 11,000, does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay. You talked to them about this, or you talked to the band choir about this. So let's see this already.
Oh, yeah, they saw it, the original, and, and then we made those adjustments based on what they said.
Nice to see this.
So Victor, Martin, do you want to kind of go through the estimates?
I'll start and if I get in trouble, I'll ask Martin. Yeah, we really have three, four pages of estimates here. We've got, so you have to bear with us, some of them were kind of came together here pretty recently. But this first page starts out with the two different options for the high school. We just collected everything together so that you could look at option one or option two, and it included both the renovations, the additions and the parking lots. You see the individual costs listed there if you were to choose to do only partial of each option. The big difference between option one and two, of course, is the fact that option one has the, the actual biomedical, as a lab addition, so essentially you're, you know, you're close $3.6 million because you're adding all and still renovating the existing space. So there's a minor difference between renovating and in the general classrooms versus renovating the biomedical lab. So that's, that's the two differences between those two options. The, the next line item there is the baseball softball field renovations that Misha described there, that include, those are all in, all the information that you described, the buildings, the term, the facility updates are included in each one of those projects for a total 5.7 million there. And then the additions and renovations to the junior high are sub-told there. The big part being the performing arts addition, as well as the renovation of the old area into, and I say classrooms, but all the spaces that Misha described there and has designed or captured in each of these. So primarily classrooms, but you know, restrooms, et cetera, incorporated each of the designs. So we just gave you a grand total of option one and option two, just to give you a sort of magnitude for all that work, but that's not the only work that we're talking about tonight. So a pause there in case you have any questions regarding those estimates.
So on the baseball softball fields, the $2 million discrepancies because of the outbuildings, those, those $2 million dollars worth of outbuildings?
Baseball fields are massive.
The softball field is 3.8, baseball is 1.9.
Oh.
That's $2 million. You've got beach structures.
You've got lockers and toilet rooms, toilet rooms. Two story press box, restroom concession building, those are the big differences.
$2 million, so that's a lot of money for.
Pole barn, yes, sir. Those, those buildings, those outbuildings are always expensive because you've still got all the utilities you've got to get to them. They're constructed, yes, sir. Victor, you want to explain construction soft costs?
No.
Are you, are you committed to boards?
Yeah.
Construction bricks and mortar, then we put 25% on those.
They're still going to recover the soft stuff. Haven't seen chat yet.
We'll make it up on the softball. Jerry, give us the softball, see this list play the construction costs. But you're, you're right, right?
I guess you have a monster difference. I mean, I was thinking the difference in the two.
And remember, these are projected costs. When we go out and we bid all this, that's the actual number.
Yeah, but combined, it's spending $18 million on performing arts. That's a lot.
Or page on?
I'm looking at the project cost totals on the, the first page of it. It's got performing arts addition, 11.5 million and 6.5 million, but basically for the junior high, that's $18 million. And in spending that, we're getting a total of. Five classrooms at the junior high and anywhere between three and six at the high school. So as far as capacity for educational space, we're not growing much at all when we're spending almost half of what we're talking about for performing arts. I just have a problem with that.
Okay, tell me what the 18 million is, I don't see what the 18 million is.
To, to the first page, it has the.
Performing arts addition. You've got that point four.
Here. You've got another response.
That one there is for the high school.
Six here.
And then this down here.
Okay.
Is for the junior high.
Because there wasn't a 18 million on here, it's got that, okay.
Yeah, you gotta add the two.
Yeah. It doesn't matter which, if you picked option one or two, it doesn't matter, it's the same amount. I, I don't know, that's hard for me to take. You know, we're, we're talking about classroom issues and space and, and where we're headed and it doesn't look like we're doing much to try to do that.
I think we also had a ways to go with performing arts.
I do too, but I don't know that tripling, quadrupling the size is something that we can afford to do. I mean, yeah, we've got a good program, but they've been able to have a really good program in the space they got, give them twice the space and they're going to have a lot more space to do what they're doing. You know what I mean? I just.
Sure.
It just seems like putting a lot into it.
Sure. One thing that I think we've always been very good at is basing, basing our plans and what we do with our facilities on needs and we definitely reached out to, and I, sometimes in the past, we've been criticized for not having enough conversations for, with the people who use those facilities. And so we've had those conversations, a number of them, with both high school and junior high performing arts folks. And basically this is what they say that they need. So that's kind of where this is coming from. No one has gone in and said, okay, here's what you need, but we're going to make it even bigger than you want.
Right, I get that, but I get what they would, but I'm also trying to think of what can we reward with all of our other needs.
I mean, I, I like the plans because it, it really captures both. It gives us some additional classroom space and also to really take care of performing arts that we really haven't, since we've remodeled the auditorium, really haven't addressed that too much. But just something, I'm just giving some thought back.
And that, I'm a fan of option two.
Yes.
For sure, I don't like to put that extra add-on, but those two labs, those two lab spaces are actually classrooms during the day too, that could be used, correct? Those could be.
Those will be during the day. The biomedical training will be during.
My point is, we're doing this, we get the half million dollar grant, right?
No, we're doing this to provide.
That's part of it.
We have a requirement to.
To do that.
To have, to spend $2 million as far as getting.
Which we do by doing this.
Right.
But those spaces could be used otherwise in the future if this, that problem dissipates. It's still good use of the space.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I don't really like that approach to it because.
I know, I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
Down the road, 20 years from now, who knows what, what the pathways will be.
That's true.
It's still a useful space either way. They won't, I, I don't know how, I mean, what I'm envisioning, I don't know how useful those would be as classroom space is still going to be.
As they're set up with the lab though.
Right.
They, yeah, the, one of the labs, and that's where I was encouraged when we visited Boston Scientific and we visited Cook Medical is basically, they were shells. They were just a large room that looked like a classroom.
Right.
Now on the, the other, the second training lab, we're going to try to make, put some mock hospital rooms in there. So.
But they should, all the equipment stuff should be movable.
Yeah.
You know.
Be a bed.
You know.
Just anything that's attached to the wall, but.
Yeah, but you can work around that.
Right.
And I know this is way down the road here, but we might be able to pull for funding, pull kids from the Hoosier Hills to use that lab during the day and we get.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't pull them from Hoosier Hills, but we would.
Could though.
We are, we are actually in our conversation with Boston Scientific to the point where we're going to include Spencer Owen Superintendent, so.
We get some partially those, those kids coming over.
Right.
The Perkins.
We have talked about possible. With option two, you're getting eight classrooms. So like for 3.7 billion dollars a classroom, I mean, that's, you're only getting eight classrooms. I mean, that's, you're only getting eight classrooms for $30 million. That's, I, I don't know, I.
Yeah.
I mean, and I'm a performing arts person, I mean, I, I get that, but it's, I, I, I just, I'm just having trouble with the cost of these things to, to think that we can afford to go that far.
Okay, you want to keep going?
Yeah, keep going.
We're not, we're not voting, you know, we're just, we're just learning, we're digesting.
We're just having a conversation, yeah.
Next page is some costs that we really kind of worked jointly with school industry on in terms of roof replacement and pavement. And we've got a lot of roofs in the district and this lists different components of the high school, the junior high, intermediate primary school. We broke out the membrane roofs from the metal roofs at the intermediate primary school. So that $10 million represents pretty much all the membrane roof on this campus. I don't know if you call this campus or not, but those, it's probably buildings, poor buildings. Then we've got another number down here. This came from, I think, one of the local contractors to, to do a roof over top of the standing seam. Martin, I think that's a healthy number. So.
Yeah.
There might be some work we can do on that one, but just didn't want to, we hadn't done any analysis on it. So kind of my disclaimer, that's somebody else's number.
Is the standing seam roof failing?
That's why Arnold's here. That's why Arnold.
I talked to, well, I talked to.
There's your finding, right? The standing seam roofs are laying issue, you guys?
Yes.
They're not as bad as the last, you were talking about, you want to get another 20 year done, get something. It will last another 20 in my opinion, way down right now.
And I think.
This, but you're looking for 20 year plans.
And Arnold, you and I had the conversation too. We, we feel like that number, particularly this standing seam is probably, we got it from a contractor, but we think it's a pretty high number.
We did. And I believe there's probably other avenues to address that situation as well, as opposed to what he's just said.
Yeah, I think.
There are probably other ways to take care of that without, without giving a number.
Right.
I hesitate because it's not my number, right? So it could be high, it could be low. So I'm just saying, there might be some other options that we could explore to look at that.
And I think, Victor, we, we at Skillman can, we've got the breakdown of what the contractor's intending to do. So I think we could.
Right.
We could probably.
I think.
Put a pencil to it.
Is it, am I correct? That's not a replacement of the metal, one for one metal. It's actually an overlay with a membrane on top of the metal. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Which we've done several times. Normally that's less expensive than the original metal. So that's why we're, we think it's a little heavy. My immediate reaction to those numbers.
Understand that.
You're never upset when the numbers go down. You're just upset when the numbers go up.
I wonder how that would look too though.
Actually, it's surprising. You probably wouldn't know because they, they could, they weld on a, kind of a rubber seam to make it look like the original metal. So it's a nice roof system, but it will replicate that appearance. We've got a couple of projects in Cornwall that we did over the last 10 years. It's really a pretty good solution.
So, yeah, and as Jerry said, we kind of bringing these together even today. So I think we could take a look at that, particularly the standing seam numbers. A little harder.
So just for the board's information, then the paving repairs, I think another thing that Arnold puts some work into, so I got a lot of asphalt around the district. We captured this by line item in 1.4 million dollars. So you can do a lot of asphalt work for 1.4 million. Parking lots all over. So that's that page, just for the board's information. The, the next page is some specific mechanical, mechanical projects. The temperature control system at the high school is, I believe, kind of end of life. And that's a pretty critical infrastructure for the building. The engineer's estimate, this is some work that CEC did for the district, is a million dollars. That's, as you can imagine, that's rounded to the nearest 10,000, I would guess. But that doesn't surprise me for a comprehensive replacement. That wouldn't just be the electronics, that would be new valves and a full redo. The next item is the boilers. We've got four boilers there. That'd be replacement of the boras, controls and the pumps. And then at the junior high, similar, you have three boilers. And those are, those are high efficiency boilers, controls and replacement of the pumps. So that will all work. We put a general number, 20% on these last two pages. It's possible that we could do that for less than 20% soft cost. Rather start out there and work our way down. Inevitably, we run into something that we have to do that has nothing to do with boilers in order to do boilers. So I'd like to start out with a number that's conservative and then work our way down from there. So that's, that adds up to 2.4. And then the, and then the last page is just simply a series of totals for your information. Again, it's a.
Basically range of 50 to 53 and a half million.
Okay. Let's move to this document here. So obviously, it's the common problem that, that we always have is more projects than we have money. So my intent here with, with this recommendation package is basically to give you an idea of where we are on some of our current geo bonds and older construction bonds. And also to be able to take some of the, the needs that we have and, and find a home for them. Places where we could potentially use some of our funds that we have existing. The funds that we're getting ready to bond to meet as many needs as possible in the school corporation. And so we have two geo bonds that, that are open right now. Geo bonds from 2022 and 24. The 22 bonds currently has a little over 3.6 million left in it. And the list of the, the projects that when Matt was here, Matt kept a list of the potential projects that we could take from this geo bond. I adjusted that list and I adjusted the amounts from that. Some of the important items on here, we are looking at the high school bleachers. Now that's a really high amount. It more than likely would not go that high, but our bleachers at the high school are, are old and they, they're not ADA compliant.
Below the rep.
What's that?
Bleachers below the reps.
Right.
Not deal with the permanent stays.
Right. We are, we already approved the two school buses on there. That's, that money's encumbered.
We have both too, Ray.
What's that?
We've already got both buses.
Yeah.
Good.
They've already been ordered. You see classroom furniture on there. That's taking care of funding the project, the furniture for some of the projects that we've been working on now. In addition to some additional classroom furniture, that's what, that's for. The geo bonds for 2024 are mainly technology related, for replacing student devices, replacing staff computers and laptops and, and other items related to technology.
So that's already covered, Ray?
Mm-hmm.
Out of that, the entity covered, the amount's not on there then?
It's being spent currently.
So this, this has already been accounted for?
This is what Matt and I came up with as the amount that we've received as a bond.
And all the new computers came out of that 1.3?
No, but they will. We've only spent 400,000.
These are, this is a budget.
I understand. How much of that's already been in cover is my question. We've already ordered.
Probably right now, student devices is probably about 400,000 maybe.
Okay, and that, and the whole amount of the two buses is already, the full amount's in cover?
Yes.
Okay.
The construction bonds, we have one as old as 2010 with 262,773 dollars and change. The bleachers at the junior high definitely need replaced. We need to find someplace for the, the, to replace those bleachers. We need to find the funds. Right now, they're currently out. They cannot be pushed back. They're out until we replace them. So they're just beyond life on that.
That's the bid to replace them or is that just?
Is that the estimate?
Just an estimate?
Oh, that's just.
No, that's a quote.
Okay, I thought it said 70 cents that it was worth it.
That's an actual quote from Lee Company.
Okay. That's two, is that only, it's just on one side though, isn't it?
Right.
Bleachers at the junior high.
Right.
There's no, nothing, there's no upstairs.
Right.
One level, yeah.
And for gym class, they need those pushed back.
It would be helpful.
I think we ought to start spending that.
Well, we're, we're ready to go, but, but we really need to wait until April because we get a better deal. April is apparently the ideal month to, that we, they don't have a lot of business. Everybody wants to do it during the summer. So if we do it during April, we'll save a lot of money for doing that.
That's where the bleachers are.
2019.
Is this an April price?
What's that?
Is this an April price or is it going to be lower than that?
This is the April price.
It's the April.
2019 bonds.
Well, timeout, timeout. What's the September price? Do we know how much more though? Seriously?
Well, I didn't get the quote on September.
You go seven months without the use of.
We got the best, we, we got a pretty good deal, I understand. And the cheapest month is to do it is in April. And I don't know how much.
It would be not, seriously.
Yeah.
It would be nice to know the difference and if it's, because we've earned that much in interest.
Right.
Over since 2010. I mean, I'm just thinking outside. If it's a $10,000 difference, one thing, it's a hundred thousand difference.
Correct. We just have a lot of needs, so.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand.
2019, that's pretty much, we have a mediation. We have an issue with the contractor over the concrete redo in the dining area behind the junior high. And we have a mediation coming up here in a couple of weeks. So that money's just on hold until we see what comes out of that deal.
That back wall at the junior high that we voted to do behind the bleachers, is it done?
The back wall.
There was like an extra area that they jumped or they wanted for an in-school suspension?
Yes, that was a.
Is it completed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
2020, bonds are a little over 63,000 left in that. The only thing left to come out of that would be coming up with some graphics to put in here and out in the hallway. It would not come up to 63,000. So don't get worried about that.
That was a really big picture, right?
Yeah. Right. It's just that we don't have anything else planned for that, that right now, other than the graphics for the boardroom and in the hallway.
We had to throw a little bit of that towards the EJHs and bleachers. That would be the end of the world.
The 2023 construction bonds, that's what we're working out of right now. And that's two and a half million left. And I don't know, Martin, if you want to say where we are with the current projects and what's coming out of there yet to come or?
Are we talking about the playground in there?
No.
I guess I'm not.
The activity center slash field house. Is it about that?
So.
The activity center.
So this is the bomb project for the EEC and the field.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, so.
We're, we're, we're nearing, probably mid-October.
So we've got 2.5 million current balance. One, is that going to get us to the end?
We, we have allowances in there. You'll probably get money back.
So we should have some left though, hopefully.
Yeah.
Cafeteria in good shape?
Cafeteria is, what we'll do is a cafeteria, threw me there for a second. The kitchen equipment's coming in the next couple of weeks. What we will, your, Dirk wanted for the Hill 100, we won't be quite ready for the Hill 100, although it'll be done and ready to move into. Then when we, when we turn over the existing kitchen, we will take over the old kitchen and do demo. So that's when the rest of the caf, the cafeteria part will be completed. So that, we'll turn over the, the, the new kitchen, you move into it, and then probably in November, we'll finish it out. And then you get the rest of the cafeteria area will be done at that time.
In, the month would be?
In November.
In the November, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're really hoping it's done, done and punched out first of December.
Okay. What, Jerry, remind me about the safe walkway to the junior high and high school. That's on the list.
That's, that's not part of this.
That's not part of the 2024?
No.
So I haven't seen that anywhere. I missed it.
Well, it's, it's baked into.
Oh, I see the pathway. Yeah, I see.
Yeah. I mean, we, we, we did an estimate, I think Jerry pulled it out, put it on line item.
The 282?
Yeah.
Okay. But that will have nothing to do with that between the softball fields and behind the football field. We're not doing anything back there then?
Not as part of.
It's going to be along, no, the pathway is going to be along the.
Right.
Football field, baseball there. And it makes sense. Logistically, it makes sense there. I'm asking. In terms of?
Looks like it to me.
Yeah, I don't think you want.
You won't have people parking there anymore.
You don't want students walking through the football complex.
Right. But I just, we don't want, we want to make sure kids are on the pathway, not out there in the road.
Right.
If we include the fence with, with sidewalk.
Right.
So there'll be fences on both sides of the sidewalk?
Yes.
Correct.
Right. Weld that and everything else. So you'll be lights in your backyard.
Sure.
My neighbors.
True, true. So for the projects that we're bonding now for, that we've advertised, the last two pages kind of give you an indication of what I'm suggesting we take out of the, this next round of bonds. And the last page kind of gives you an idea of, of all the items that we advertised, where we would be taking the funds out of to do those projects. So going over the page, on page three, I recommended we do option two. And you'll notice that the projected cost that I put in there is 500,000 less than what Skillman suggested, but that's accounting for the 500,000 we're going to get from the ready 2.0 funds.
Yeah, for, for sure have that money sitting somewhere.
We will be getting that, yes. We don't have it yet.
And it doesn't have to be shown? It has to be used for certain things?
It has to be for brick and mortar.
Brick and mortar, okay, perfect.
And it has to be spent by December 2028.
Okay.
And then I added the softball and baseball turf in there. Now. Now uh, you know, people are always asking, and uh, so the, the athletic director would like us all to, also to do soccer, and suggested that other school corporations that did baseball and softball also did soccer and then got a better price. But I wasn't, I don't think we're ready to do that, so I just kept it at baseball and softball turf, plus the renovations to the softball field. So that figure is exactly what uh, Skillman is recommending. And then I included the high school roof in that. I included um, the asphalt. Now, I didn't include the price for Edgewood Drive in there. Uh, like I said, I was trying to look for ways to not spend as much money, so um, I just wanted to make a note of that. Uh, the pathway between the junior high and high schools included in here. We went up and take, took a look at the tennis court area, and um, our hope was to totally replace everything, uh, repave it, uh, new fencing, uh, new lighting, uh, sidewalks around, uh, concrete around the perimeter, so there'd be a place for uh, people to uh, sit and watch the, the tennis matches. We, we really um, we haven't really been able to have somebody to give us a specific quote on that. We didn't have time to do all that. Uh, we did get some numbers from uh, MCC, who is in the process of replacing their tennis courts, and they estimated uh, two hundred thousand per court. And that, that didn't include fencing and lighting and all that.
So this is just.
So this is just repairing the, the cracks.
And we just, we did all that about four years ago, didn't we?
Right, so this would buy us a few more years.
So it's just the cracks that got repaired or is it cracking again?
They're, yes. And I put uh, I put eight hundred thousand, nothing here is written in stone, by the way. This is just for, something for us to start talking about. But I put eight hundred thousand in there mainly to uh, take care of the boilers that we need to replace. We probably need some additional funds for that. The controls, uh, I was hoping, and I talked to um, uh, our, the guy that we talked to about Gabe, what's Gabe's last name? That uh, what's that?
Yeah, with the engineer?
Yeah.
Oh.
And I asked him, I, if uh, if we could possibly push out the controls to two thousand twenty-seven, and he thought we could uh, piecemeal it to get there. Now, I, I am not a, an expert in any way on HVAC, but my own personal opinion, it just feels like a endless pit. Because uh, I, I'll be real honest with you, I, I um, as I took over some of these things for Matt, and I watched Matt last year and watched Arnold, uh, I just seen him running around here, like their heads were cut off, even after we spent a lot of money, uh, and, and so, uh, starting the school year, we had some issues at the high school. We had some issues at the elementary school, and so we had a meeting with Johnson Control and, and Gabe, and um, I wanted to learn from that conversation, you know, why is that? And I did discover that my, it was my assumption when we were uh, spending this money on HVAC, that we were replacing the whole systems and we were not. We were just replacing pieces that were broken. And that's been the philosophy of the school corporation for a number of years. So where we are right now is that we have a, a brand-new equipment that's trying to talk with equipment that's twenty, twenty-five years old. And uh, and that's why we had, constantly are having issues, because we need to have folks like Johnson Control come in and um, and try to get these different versions working and talking together again. I really think we need to uh, develop a, a long-term plan with HVAC of uh, that's gonna be very expensive down the road. We, we don't have that right now. We, we're trying to put that plan together. But uh, down the road, I just think that if we just keep piecemealing things, we're gonna continue to have problems. So I kinda put some money in here to take care of the most immediate needs and put HVAC on there for two thousand twenty-seven. Uh, so by then we'll have a, a, a more established plan of where we need to go with, with uh, HVAC.
And in my ears on the board, it seems like we replace boilers almost every other year, so if the boiler goes wrong somewhere, so.
I don't, the boys and girls club, we, we accounted for a lot of money out there. Is it completed yet?
It's completed, but we.
I mean, we spent a ton of money.
Yeah, it's completed, but there continue to be issues.
Is it because of the supplier or the installer or?
The word I got really today was that uh, really they didn't, they used a more cheaper version of uh, what they should have done. And uh, and so we're gonna be taking a look at using our warranty to get what they put in replaced.
We haven't had it, we haven't had it a year yet.
Right. Arnold, do you have anything to add to that? They just continue to fail?
The boys and girls club?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was done today in this pre-sit.
What?
So I just had to reset it today. So when they set it up, it was great, went super hot out.
Right. But it's, is it even, didn't even get done?
Oh yeah, it's done, it's just.
Cause I saw him out there all summer working the different, whoever the contractors were.
I mean, anybody here that has more knowledge about HVAC than, than I do, but it is very complicated area. So for me, the novice, we spent a lot of money while I was just working.
Right.
Uh, but it's, it sounds like that today's equipment is, is what, there's a lot more technology involved, and so um, it's very sen- sensitive, I guess.
I guess I, I can tell a couple things globally. We have seen more and more poor-quality manufactured products show up, missing parts, errors in the construction.
Bad parts?
Yes, right from the factory, installed with problems that have to be then repaired on warranty. That has become more common than it should be.
A, a lot of assembly issues.
The second piece is that as they've been trying to drive efficiency, for energy efficiency, they're getting more and more sensitive, more and more computer-based, more and more, um, just, everything has to work perfectly in order for it to work at all, kind of a situation. Uh, and as they've driven this higher technology for higher performance, the life cycle's gotten shorter. I mean, this phone's two years old. I mean, it's the same kinda situation where the technology has a shorter life cycle. So mechanical equipment, it used to have a big boiler that lasted for forty, fifty years, made out of cast iron, had a burner and you hooked it up to the gas. Now it's very high-performance, hot, and made out of very thin sheet metal. So, and then I guess the fourth component is we have a shrinking uh, workforce of the technology and the quality that understands how to install and maintain and repair these systems. So we have a lot of things working against us, and so you're not alone, if that makes you feel any better, in, in terms of the kind of experiences that we're having, you know, across the board, in the industry. Not to mention, I'm sure you have existing buildings that are a little, little over, that you've got problems with. I don't mean to be Debbie Downer, just having some reality. You're not gonna invite me back, are you?
Thanks a lot.
Okay, so uh, moving forward for the junior high, uh, this would be exactly as the Misha described the project uh, for six point six million, uh, roof uh, for the junior high, and also asphalt around the junior high and the parking lots. And then EPS and EIS includes uh, roofing for that and also uh, asphalt. Now, we were out there today looking at um, a possible solution of uh, what we could do with the traffic on Reeves Road in, in terms of getting some of that traffic off of Reeves Road. Um, and uh, he was an engineer, right? Civil engineer. Civil engineer that, that uh, he's gonna look at uh, two or three different options of what we could do to, to try to address that need. So we may need to uh, look for, if we wanna take care of that, uh, sooner, we'll need to find some funds. If not, we'll, we'll put that off to, to later bonding time. And then on, on page four at the bottom are just some uh, projects that, that have been mentioned through all these conversations to get to the point we are today. These are just some additional uh, projects that have been mentioned uh, to me, that I just wanna put them on the list as future projects, uh, which would be HVAC work. We really wanted to get a new technology office and storage room, um, but um, I just don't see how we could do that uh, right now. Oh, this renovating old band and choir rooms to gain additional classrooms. I should have taken that off. On the last page at the bottom.
Okay, but that, so you don't have that in?
Let me.
No, that's not. That's not part of.
No, no, this is just, this will just be down the road.
Right, so that, the band, the current band and choir at junior high would mean as they are, and they can manipulate them and use them as they needed to, the school could? We're not doing any.
Yeah, let me, let me explain it first.
Okay.
So one of the things I was trying to do to save money, looking at the junior high, was to just do the uh, expansion, the band and choir room expansion, and uh, leave the old band and choir area as is. And I was talking to Kent Rensler about can we move some programs into those spaces without renovating them?
Right.
And, and hi- his response was it really wouldn't gain us maybe one classroom. And, and uh, plus, he's talking about some additional, and he's trying to think ahead in terms of uh, there's a large Journeys classroom uh, that, that they may have to, they may eventually inherit those kids and have to have a space available to them. So uh, my original idea to try to reduce that figure that we had for the junior high, according to the principal, that wouldn't work, so I went ahead and, and, and put the full amount in there, and, and then I forgot and I put that here on the list of future projects, so that really could be crossed out there.
That's not part of the twenty twenty-five.
Right, right. Tennis court replacement, uh, like I said, when we met with the uh, principal, uh, high school principal and a, a high school athletic director, they also talked about needs down at the uh, soccer field, uh, in terms of turf and also having concession and storage area down there, uh, parking around campus, uh, mowing equipment and just additional items. That's just a very fluid list. We really don't need to spend a lot of time on. So if you look at that table on page four, I put in red those projects that we advertised, that we don't have to do this all at once, and I'm not nearly closely suggesting we do all this all at once, but we, we can uh, bond, we can address all these areas if we still wanted to. Uh, and then um, if, if the board would say, yeah, that sounds like a good idea, then we'll work with Skillman to kinda map out, okay, what projects does it's, does it make sense to connect? Like we, we uh, included the fieldhouse and the preschool uh, together so that we can uh, save some money on having the construction uh, companies here and, and um, and that really would prove to be very beneficial, uh, because to get the preschool done, we pulled some people from, I didn't, we, Martin and his team pulled some people from the fieldhouse to get the preschool done. So it does help us with cost, it helps with uh, being able to adjust uh, how the projects are going. Uh, and, and so uh, I once wanted to show you that, that we could, if we wanted to, address almost all of the, the projects that we advertised. Now, this would involve bonding, uh, getting all forty million uh, upfront, which would be uh, my recommendation, uh, because it does uh, give us that money uh, at one time, helps, enables us to be able to react to, to uh, maybe some anticipated issues that might come up, uh, that we would have all those funds uh, available. Plus, uh, we would be able to, to gain some uh, money from interest rates. And I have, oh yeah, I have here, we've, I mean, if you wanted to know, uh, Debbie gave me some figures today on the different uh, uh, funds that we have and the interest, the interest that we've gained from that, and so uh.
Can you guys copy that?
Yes, I don't have a copy right now, but I'll make copies. Uh, so, uh, Matt, do you wanna add, have you listened to uh, some things in terms of?
Yeah, I mean, I think from my point of view, it's kinda the same that's been the last few times that we've talked. I mean, we've been looking at this forty million uh, structured in a way that you can come back in a couple of years and potentially borrow more money to address some of these other needs that Dr. Sanders has talked about in the future. I will say, you know, if you borrow the full forty million now, looking ahead, you know, remaining capacity is somewhere in the thirty to thirty-five million dollars, depending on where interest rates are. That assumption is that you keep your debt service levy constant, levy being the number of dollars that you're asking for from taxpayers. I will say that I think that that's probably gonna be difficult to maintain in perpetuity and in terms of everything costs more in the future, and so keeping a levy constant for twenty years, I think might be difficult, but that's kinda how we've run it now. And so if you guys have more conversations and wanna look at something perhaps differently or just different scenarios, we can certainly do that. But yeah, I mean, the, the forty million can be borrowed without increasing the levy and still uh, retain capacity in the future. It's just as you prioritize some of these projects, are you able to do everything that you wanna do under kinda these constraints?
How many defined future? How many years?
So the way we have it set up right now.
Yeah, I don't know if you could have looked at it again or not.
Yeah, the way we have it set up now is that you could come back in twenty-seven and do additional projects, but that is totally fluid and up to you. That's just kinda the way that we've run it. As of now, if you come back and say we need to do more next year, then we can structure it that way.
Or tax rate can maybe level or drop a bit.
The, the, we have no control over the tax rate anymore because of what the assessed value is, is likely to do. So we're, we're talking about the dollars. We're, what, what we're likely to see over the next five years is if you ask for the same dollars in your debt service fund each and every year, I would expect the tax rate to be higher at the end of that five years. Now, it may not be each and every year. Your assessed value went up half a percent, half a percent this year, and so um, if you keep your debt service levy um, level from twenty-five to twenty-six, your tax rate's gonna go from a dollar three to a dollar four. It's gonna go up because you're taking. It's gonna go up because you're taking new money in operations. That's where they give you the growth quotient of, of four percent. So the total levy is going up, but it has nothing to do with these projects. It's solely from the operations fund. And so if we see an assessed value that doesn't grow or potentially goes down, even if you're asking for the same dollars, that tax rate is gonna go higher. And I think that is gonna be the difficult thing, and I'm still having to wrap my head around it, you know, we've had the Senate bill one for five months, is we've been talking about tax rate for five or six years, and you guys have hit the tax rate each and every year. And now the way they're changing the math is you don't really have any control over that. And so now we're looking at the dollars that you're asking for. And so the assumption is that would be flatlined moving forward at this current time as we run some of these projections in terms of how much.
So theoretically, though, the taxpayer, their assessed value may drop, but their tax rate, but their total tax dollars would be very comparable is my point. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Hundred percent.
I mean, that's kind of, we worked it the other way before.
If you ask for the same dollars from this year to next year, the assessed value almost doesn't matter. It could go down fifty percent. Your tax rate is gonna go higher to generate the same dollars.
Correct, so their, their tax, their tax bill that they get.
Their liability.
Twice a year is gonna look very comparable each time.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
That, the portion of the tax bill that they get, the only increase that they may see is because of the operations fund. They will not see an increase at all because of this project, because we're, we're, we're leveling out that debt service levy.
Gotcha.
Yes. So it's gonna be the, it's gonna be the interplay between the assessed value and the tax rate. That's gonna be jumping around each and every year, but I think we're gonna see some wonky results. But now we're talking about the dollars asked for.
So what you just paid in November is gonna be, our goal is gonna be common?
Yes.
We're just gonna work it, we're gonna work it back.
At some point in.
Yeah, it's all relevant, yeah.
At some point in the future, it is my expectation that levies are gonna have to start growing again a little bit. Now, is that the cost of inflation? I, I don't know.
Right, I get that.
You're doing this project in twenty-twenty-five, and Victor prices it for these, the same project in twenty-thirty-five, that's where it's gonna be hard, I think, to hold that levy constant forever. But certainly, we can do it through this project and, and through the near future.
And if the taxes change, it's not gonna be because of the school.
Correct.
It's gonna be caused by Elsfield and it's not, and they're gonna be paying more Elsfield.
Right.
Or, or like the fire department, that could affect everybody too.
But if, if we're positive, if we're optimistic and think that the year is going to continue to grow.
But even if, even if it doesn't.
Or half a percent.
Right. If, if the tax rate goes up a little, like a two, two cents.
The assessed value still go to balance out to the same dollar. Right.
Yes. And it's a good distinction too, so I want to, I want to make this clear.
Try to, you know, explain that to taxpayer.
Of course. The tax liability that the taxpayer pays for the school corporation is going to be comparable. Now, is the total tax bill gonna, potentially, but your portion that you're responsible for.
We can control, correct.
Yes, yes.
Which is different than we've been doing. Because of the assessed value growing, we've actually been increasing our levy.
Correct.
And taken advantage of all that up until this point.
But still lowering the tax rate, correct?
Yeah. Because the assessed value went so high, we were able to lower the tax rate and still bring in a lot more levy.
And by the twenty-twenty-seven, potential bond, there'll be another two legislatures in a second. Correct. So, I mean, we don't, we really don't know.
It's a great point. It's a, I mean.
Twenty-twenty-eight is a big, that's the big year.
But it could change between now and then, Jimmy.
Well, the budget's set for next year.
It's, it's sad, but they've been pretty clear that they're gonna reopen it next year and that we have heard. Now, does that impact K-12? It's too early to say, but we've heard from legislators that they're not thrilled with what came out of that.
City and town needs some help. Yeah, we also need some help, but we're, we're hurt.
Well, and I think, I think what I've heard when they're not happy with what, I, I don't think they think they went far enough. And so I don't, I don't anticipate them opening the budget for a reprieve. I think if the budget get open, I think there's more downside risk than there is upside risk. Yeah, so I, I don't mean to, to get you optimistic, because I don't.
No, we don't do that.
Thanks for bursting the buzzer.
We're bee-busting, right?
Right.
Oh, now that's going all, it's already after Chay and Chap on now, and they're paying Elsfield city taxes too.
Right.
Top of.
Yeah.
So, I don't, are you considering those now?
No, no. We, Elsfield, it paid a wheel tax.
Been hearing that a lot.
The least amount they could do, which they tried to get them to go the most, but happened a couple of board members didn't want to do that. But we're, we're not rehiring a police officer. I guess that's why I'm so sensitive about, about what's going on.
Yeah.
We're like, lost a police officer, yeah.
So Jerry, I, I know I went out of the room for a moment, but the, what were you saying about the renovation of these classrooms at the junior high?
So one of the, I was looking for ways to get the biggest bang for our buck, and so.
And it's not in this, is what I'm getting at, where.
It is.
Where is it?
So where, where it says six millions, six million, six hundred thousand, ninety-three-eight dollars.
Yeah, that's the performing arts, it doesn't include the two point two million to renovate band and choir.
Oh, it's your junior high one that you were talking about, that you were gonna do the.
Oh, okay, I thought I put that.
So right now, you're, if you add that back in, you're over forty-two million.
Right, okay. I meant to, I thought I'd put that back in there.
Because for the forty million, you're only getting three classrooms.
Yeah, you're right.
I don't know, I just got.
That's one.
Well, I was hoping that we were gonna move further, but I don't think that I can vote for spending that much, forty million dollars and not doing much at all for education. Yeah, educational space. And, and I know some of these spaces get used for education too, but I don't mean that. And yes, I mean, we have successful performing arts programs, but they do have them in the space they have, and they do need more space.
Well, that, that's the purpose of this meeting is I, I'm looking for guidance on whether or not we want to ask for the full forty million. I, I wanna, right?
Yeah, so I, just a quick distinction on that, and Victor's probably not to the point where he has any sort of draw schedule, but typically, we fund these projects one year at a time, right? And so you could certainly borrow the, the forty million if, if Victor and Martin tell us, you know, it's gonna be a two-year spend down, then we're essentially starting to pay interest on forty million dollars, and we're, it's taken us two years to spend. And so kind of the way we started to do this, just for efficiency purposes and, and help your capacity, is if they tell us you can only spend twenty million dollars next year in terms of these projects, then we borrow that twenty million now, we fund it through next year, come back next year and do the remaining twenty million or whatever you guys decide that it is. That way, we're not paying interest on the full forty million from day one. It will increase your debt capacity. But if they tell us, no, we could spend all this money in, you know, fourteen months or twelve months, and certainly, we can go and borrow it all. These projects, I think, tend to take a little bit longer than they did five or six years ago, but I would look to these guys on, on the spend down. I doubt we're quite there yet, though. I don't know if you have any.
The rough rule of thumb is I'd like to have no more than a million dollars a month in new construction, right? So, you know, if you were building a ten million dollar addition, I would want a year to do that. Build a twenty million dollar addition, I'd want two years to do it. I mean, that's the rule of thumb we start with. So you have to spend down by two years, ninety-five percent of the money?
Yeah.
Is that the point which the bond sale closes? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's for arbitrage purposes, and that's not something I get super concerned about right now. Yeah, I mean, that, a lot of times when you say you have two years to spend, people think we literally only have two years to spend. You have as long as you need to spend. That's for arbitrage purposes. What that is, is if you earn, say you borrow the forty million dollars, you put it in the bank, as you spend it down, if you earn an interest rate on that, essentially investment income that is above the interest rate of the bonds, then you would need to give that back to the IRS if you don't spend all of the dollars within two years. I don't typically get super concerned, because we're talking tens of thousands of dollars that maybe you have to give back. You don't have to give back all the interest, you only have to give back the delta between what you could earn and what you did earn. And so I don't want you guys to get caught up on that is like the most important thing ever. That's exactly right. That is exactly right. In, in, historically, when rates were super low, you weren't ever getting close. Now that rates are a little bit higher, that's a potential. However, we're probably going into a cycle of rates coming down. So if you were to borrow this money today at four percent, you're likely not earning four percent a year from now if the Fed starts cutting the way they're saying they're going to cut. And so I don't see that as being a huge, I, I guess, consideration in terms of this. But, but yeah, it's, it's a two-year spend down to, to meet the arbitrage requirements.
So the nice thing I should point out is that that's not cumulative, a million. So for example, if we had a million in addition, and then we had a concurrent asphalt of a million or a concurrent roofing of a million, we could work that into it. So I don't necessarily mean if you spent thirty million in construction, that it's thirty months. We can stack those projects just like we stack these together.
Right, like this pass, this pass it on balances.
Those aren't collecting interest collectively, they're per year. There was like, it was like sixty, seventy thousand, like past years. They're not sitting in the same account, a hundred thirty thousand or anything.
No, they were all earns, they're all in separate accounts, earning separate interest. You gotta track separately, and then the money's gotta go into those specific projects.
Years ago, too.
Correct, that is correct, yes.
What's, what's, what's it is rate, the idea?
Uh, you're probably right at four percent. Rates have come down about a quarter of a point last three days because we've gotten a bunch of bad economic news, and so now we're thinking the Fed's gonna have to cut and potentially even do a double cut here at the end of this month. I'll believe that when I see it the way it's been doing the last year. But there is momentum, there's a lot of momentum for lower rates. And certainly Powell's, you know, he's gonna be out next spring, and so they're starting to replace kind of those spots with some people that want rates to come down. So I think it's coming, but we've been saying that for eighteen months, and so.
What's the timeframe of wanting to get these issued?
So you'll be through the legal process to where you're free and clear to sell. I think it's October thirtieth, or twenty-third, looking at Jacob's timeline. So right now, we're anticipating call it the first week in November. So we still got some time for you guys to put your heads together, figure out exactly how you want to do this. We're not under the gun yet by, by any means.
And all that power and stuff, you, you, your parameter was, I think, it's six percent, wasn't it?
I think I even had seven percent, maybe. Yeah, we won't, nowhere close to that.
You always went high and all that, we went high.
Yeah, I had seven percent in there. So again, as we sit here today, we might even be under four after today's movement. If the Fed doesn't cut in September, or they don't do what the market expects, we might see rates revert back higher. So I don't want to get you too excited with that four percent, because a lot of things could change.
Sure, so was that the high side, is what I'm saying?
A hundred percent. And even when I tell you kind of those capacity, I'm running everything at, at a five percent interest rate. And so if interest rates end up coming down or staying down, then that capacity goes up. So yeah, I don't, I don't want you to get stuck on, these are the end-all, be-all numbers, because they're all just projections based on certain assumptions that might change.
So the concern. Dana brought up, would you like us to?
Classroom.
Yeah, would you like us to go back and take another look at this and make the band?
I don't remember what the classroom needs were at each building, what they were needing and projecting that they would need. So I don't know what the, I don't remember, was that in that facilities?
The facility study?
Yeah.
Well, that's been a while back, so.
So, yeah, it'd be.
Isn't it just really a result of, once you build an addition, what you have is what you have to remodel into other use space?
Yeah.
Right, the space is gonna, the space is.
Whatever you have, the space you vacated creates five or six classrooms, whatever. The question is, how much do you want to spend on the new addition, or whether you want to do a new addition? Is that, I mean, maybe it's that simple, I don't know.
Well, or should some of that addition be classrooms? There are, is there enough?
For capacity.
Yes. Do we need more classrooms?
Two-gain percentage of performing arts space, like that, first of that in a classroom?
Yeah.
Okay, because this space is not changing at all. Space is still gonna be alright.
Yes.
If we, if, if they move, go down here, I find it hard to believe that six classrooms here can all be made by one man.
Well, that would be without, without any remodeling.
Yeah, like the choir room is, has concrete bleachers, so you really can't make that a classroom.
Okay, I'd just like to see it, because I see like a lot of space there.
The band room is rather large, so that it wouldn't be a typical classroom.
Rooms and stuff to take up space.
So it would need some, yeah, it would need some adjustment. And we kicked that.
They all have block.
I thought we were gonna do something up here with choir and just make classrooms here originally.
Well, but what they were looking at was the, they were talking about this plus this stuff in here.
The weight room area.
Right.
And then turn that stuff down here to classrooms and, well, that was possibility, well, that was one of, one of the things.
Yeah, but one of the issues was this height of the.
The ceiling, the roof.
To be able to put.
One of the things that, I'm, I'm not arguing, I'm just raising other points, but one of the things I worry about is putting money into additional band and choir space, and then as soon as we're done, people saying it's just not big enough.
We already said that. Our band director will say that, no matter how much we give him.
No matter what he says.
Well, we always hear that on all of our projects. You're right.
And, and, I mean, love him to death, but Dirk is, if we added fifteen new classrooms, he would say he needed another classroom. Yeah. Or another office space.
Yeah.
Storage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we can go back and take another look at it for sure.
Have you worked, again, you said some of the other schools were maybe a little bit bigger than us that had similar facilities. Have you designed these facilities with two-thirds of space of what we're asking for?
I think we have examples from all ranges, and it, it seems to be driven by the success of the program, to be quite frankly with you. It seems like, I, I mean, even in the same district, I might have one school, a middle school that's super music, and they have busting from the seams, and then on the other side of the district, they don't have very strong programs. So it's very, it's very circumstantial to, you know, the success of the program and, you know. And people are very, very vocal about the space they need in order to move and, you know, set up and have indoor space.
And I, again, we're being people that have all this success and having lost students that I know of because of it with the facilities we have. So I do think making them better, we need to make them better. I'm, I would, I guess one of the things I really need to know how many more classrooms we really do need, and where do we need them at? You know, is, do we need more classrooms at EIS and EPS? EPS got those four that they've taken over, so that's really helped, but, you know, I.
Well, junior high is a, is a school of the greatest need, I'd say.
Right.
One thing you might think about is, you know, if you look at it, option two, biomedical labs, convert it to classrooms, that's two point six million dollars. So that, probably not gonna move the needle very much, it's X amount of space that you're gonna remodel into something. The performing arts addition as proposed is eleven point four. That's, I think with the mezzanine, it's closer to twenty thousand square feet, but, so it is easily twice as big as, maybe two and, two and a half times. I guess my point is, if you just replicated the square footage you have now, you're probably in five, six million dollars addition. So if eleven. So if eleven point four is too much, and you wouldn't replicate how much square footage you have now, five to six. What's the speed spot? What is, what is, what's your threshold? I mean, that's another way to look at it is, I don't wanna replicate what I have, but maybe this is too much. So it must be somewhere between five and a half and eleven and a half.
Right.
Is that a fair statement?
I mean, just looking at the footprint, the, the band is real close to the size of the band and choir now.
Right.
So I think that's what Jerry may have been asking, if I was Misha, I'd be like, okay, well, that's too big, what is big enough?
But that's just the band room, that hasn't encountered the fact that there's all those other offices and the equipment storage and all that. That's not even in that band room anymore.
Right, right.
Yeah, we're, you have seven thousand two hundred square feet now, the design's proposing over eighteen.
And the seven thousand two hundred includes band, choir and auxiliary rooms.
So if you put it in dollars perspective, if I replicate what I have, it's somewhere around five to six million. If I more than double and do what's shown, it's eleven point four. So I think what I'm hearing you say is you want a solution somewhere between five to six and eleven four. Is that, is it?
Or, well, or I think what part of what I picked up is, somebody, if we're gonna do this much, why isn't more of its classroom space in here? Why isn't?
Okay, or it's maybe eleven point four is the right number, but it needs to have classroom space incorporated, is that another way?
I don't think the heartburns.
The amount of money we're putting into classrooms is minimal with this forty million dollars. And I have a hard time stomaching that. So, and to me, the place to get more classroom space out of, or to cut costs so that you can use that money somewhere else, would be to lower the amount of performing arts space in the two buildings.
You, your heartburn isn't the forty million dollars, it's what it's being spent.
Exactly. That's.
The efficiency is what's spent, yeah. The total student population using, does that sound right?
Well, it just, what is your basic academics as opposed to the arts academics? You know, science, English, math, all those other things.
Well, and I, I understand where you come from Dana, the one thing I will point out is that it's been, in the last four years, we have added quite a bit of classroom space, we haven't done anything for the, for the, for the, we did all the science labs.
I mean, I, I mean.
Yeah, and that would be.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah, that would be the counterbalance to that, I think.
I don't think that balances out that, making them three to four times the size.
Right.
I don't think that balances out to me.
So Victor.
If, if that's the case, then we should be putting that money into something else, whether it's more of the HVAC or more of the roof. Or more of the, you know, there's, there's other needs out there that I just think we're spending too much on performing arts when we have so many other needs.
So if we.
I'm not worried about the forty million, I'm just worried about what that forty million.
So if, if, if we took a arbitrary percentage, say two-thirds of that eighteen eight, and added that space and whatever that would save us, put that toward the HVAC and the, and and some of the other stuff, I think.
Even if it's not classrooms, it's.
Right, something that that makes that forty million a little less.
And I think if we're looking at twenty-seven, twenty-eight, somewhere in there for maybe even other bonds, things like, okay, well, what if we did for the softball? What if we fixed the field and gave them a concession stand and bathroom and listed it that for now? What if we just, uh, of course, I understand if you're turfing the, the, um, pitching.
Baseball.
Yeah, you don't wanna.
I don't think you would separate.
Separate that necessarily. I don't know, or maybe you do one field and then, and three years later, you do the other field or something.
You can, you take those costs.
Yeah.
Well.
Well.
I mean, I played on, I have a, I'm having issues with the turfing too, because I, it's, it's like there's so many other things, like you're saying, you know, classroom, HVAC, roofs, all the things that we, we have to do, we have to get that done first. Turfing is way low, in my opinion, on that total.
Well. I understand what you're saying, but in terms of, uh, in this day and age, when parents can take their kids anywhere, the, their athletes can, they can take their athletes anywhere. We, uh, we are getting behind on, uh, our fields being turfed. And we will lose students going to, uh, MCC. Martinzo has all their fields turfed now, MCC has all their fields turfed. Uh, I think Spencer Owens going that way now. And so parents were, quite frankly, uh, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying, we, parents will choose to go places where the facilities are better, uh, for the.
I mean, when I played sport, it, you had a coach that could coach your, it didn't matter what field we played on, didn't matter if it was. If you had a good coach, you had quality stuff, your students are gonna stay. It's not because you have a turf field or not, so I don't know, I have a problem with that being at a higher level. There's more other things, in my opinion, to spend that two point whatever million on. Just not right now, and then just walking into what we're gonna be walking into in the next few years.
Well, I like the turf, I think we need to do it, I think it brings people in, so.
Well, the, the other thing Jerry's talked about is the.
Wear and tear.
Well, yeah, and also tournaments. I agree, I mean, it just, I think it's, we're going into a different world.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, we had to, we were hosting the sectionals and it rained a lot, so we had to move the sectionals over to Bloomington North.
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
Do we, is everybody at least comfortable with the concept of bonding?
The full forty?
The full forty million?
I think we're gonna have to.
Can break it up if we want to. I think we're already kind of arguing over what ought to be spent in that four.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we have a choice, I mean, honestly, I think we, we need to.
Yeah.
I really do.
I was really wanting to keep it down to thirty, honestly. I thought that's hoping that's where we would end up, but if you, I like that, if you keep what Matt said, you should send it to us again.
Yes.
Showing how the capacity works out.
Yep.
Well, and and as they drop off, then I think, I do like the idea of Jerry, of picking up some of, we need to get some of those cleared out, pick up some projects, wrap these up. Some of those old bars, we need to get those down. Well, and the idea of twenty this year and twenty next, that makes some sense too.
The stacking may be a little odd, because like if you look at your biggest one, that's like twelve months. But then you also have all the time to design, so does that include the design time or that just construction time?
It was construction, I was talking about. I would encourage you, if you're going to do a junior high addition and a high school addition, I would encourage you to put those together. I think kind of what.
Kind of like we did this time.
Like Jerry articulated earlier, makes a lot of sense. On the other hand, if you wanna pull the trigger on HVAC, roofing or pavement, I don't see the same kind of concerns. Although we could combine mechanical with the additions, you could also do it independent. But, um, those would be some things if you wanna peel off and get going on, those would be a first choice.
Just to hold off on the asphalt.
Most of the construction.
That's a good one, that's a good one, although I think there's, yeah. Depends on where we're at again, right?
Does that keep us under that, what's that bracket, seventy-five percent or sixty-nine percent?
Seventy cents?
But by doing it stairs test, would that be still fine on that thing? If we, if we did twenty maybe twice.
So the.
Rates could go that way too.
Yeah, the, the, if you keep your levy level, then the stair stepping is not gonna impact that. It's solely gonna be based off, does your AV drop and how quickly does it drop? What the stair stepping would help do is increase your overall debt capacity. So if you did it all now and then did the rest in twenty-seven, you're talking, you know, seventy to seventy-five million. Does that number become seventy-five to eighty million by splitting this up? That's where, if you're saving interest costs, that means you can add more principal in there.
Right.
The seventy cents is solely gonna be a function of your assessed value moving forward, if you decide to keep that levy level each and every year. So if your, if your assessed value, let's just say, flatlines, then you're not gonna get to the seventy cents, cause you guys are at sixty-five cents right now. But if you lose five percent in twenty-seven, let's say, you're gonna start creeping towards that seventy cents. So my expectation for you is by the time we get to thirty-one, and I mentioned thirty-one, cause that's when all of the Senate Bill one is fully phased in. My guess is you will be above seventy cents, but that's a time will, I just don't know how it's ultimately gonna impact your assessed value.
There's just so many changes.
So many changes, so it's, I, I know it's not helpful, but I just, I don't really have any answers beyond next year, cause it's the only data we have.
I don't know what the rates are gonna be, the bond rates in two years from now. If it dips below four, we lock it, we lock in the old thing.
Yeah.
And we're not really gonna be too concerned about arbitrage anyway.
I don't foresee arbitrage. I don't foresee arbitrage being an issue for you guys, no.
There is arbitrage, it just means you have excess, so.
That's right, yeah, you still keep what you earn, you just have to give back what you earned in excess. But with the rates likely coming down, we're kind of on the cycle where rates are probably gonna come back down. You're likely to lock in a rate and then your investment rates start coming down. So my guess is you won't run into it, but again, we, we, we just don't know that.
So I, I have a couple of questions, uh, for roofing, does, does it save money to do all the roofs at one time? Or can we do like the elementary schools first, then the high school, then the junior high?
I think that there's, there's a diminishing return once you get to a certain point, Jerry, so, um.
I would almost think if you did the high school and then coupled the rest of them.
I, I was gonna say, ten million dollars worth of roofing is more than anybody could, if most companies could take on at one time. So to, to your point about phasing the roofing out, yes, that you're not gonna lose that economy of scale if you broke that into three or four phases. So, so yes, to answer your question, we could break the roofing out into two or three years easily and not lose that economy of scale.
All right, I appreciate that. The other question for the board is, do you, given some of the other needs that we have with this biomedical training project, would you, uh, what are your thoughts on scaling that back in terms of, um, we are pretty far along with Bo- Boston Scientific? Boston Scientific and Cook Medical, they could, they could basically use one classroom, maybe, yeah, one classroom. At the risk of, uh, not taking the five hundred thousand. I just wanna make sure, I wanna see, I just wanna know kind of your thoughts on, are you convinced? I mean, I'm obviously very convinced in the, in that project, but, uh, as a board, uh, I would like to have some direction of, we don't wanna take all, we don't wanna take the, the grant just to get, we don't spend a lot of money just to get the grant. We wanna spend the money to meet needs, um, so.
I'm, I'm very committed to that, that, uh, concept of the, the medical career path. And I think that is, I think we've invested a lot in it already and that, uh, we've, we've really, I don't know, have, I'm banking on it. I'm, I'm counting on it, it helping our, our community, our students for a number of years to come. I'd hate to see us scaling back, and I think we've already cut it back from what I originally saw.
I just wanna, I'm just trying to get some.
I would like to see something, I know it's early maybe, but I would like to see something more in concrete from what they're willing to give back to us. Who, Boston Scientific and Cook. The grant's not coming from them, Jerry, it's coming from, right. And I know they're excited about it, but we're doing all the legwork, what are they bringing to the table? I've not seen it yet, maybe you've seen it and you haven't shared it. But I'd like to see what, what we're gonna get in return for that.
They, they are, the, the whole idea was that they would provide the facilitators to come onto our campus and.
Are we, we can see it in writing though?
Well, something I just started talking to Christine about, I think, or I meant to.
She's like, no, not yet.
It's on my list to do then, um, uh, I'd like to create some MOUs.
Correct.
Uh, with them to, and have the board approve those MOUs.
If we're committing to doing this, what are you gonna commit to us?
And I'd like to see, are we, you did mention IU or IU Health or Centra, are we still in discussion with them or?
We're in conversations with, with all three of them and, uh, we've even been approached by Centra.
Yeah.
Uh, to, to get involved, um, I, uh, IU Health has a gentleman that, we, he's a professor at IU, but he goes all over the country and sets up these SIM labs, uh, and, uh, so he volunteered actually to work with us on, on creating. One of these labs would be like a SIM lab.
Yeah. That'd be super.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'd, I'd love to see.
I think the big benefit to this is because it's a big benefit to our students.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And it's helping them get prepared for jobs.
Well, and a lot of, a lot of high schools are currently having their students start as juniors and already, like in the nursing field, they're already taking courses. So by the time they're out of high school, they have almost, and some have gotten their associate's degree already.
Right, well, and the.
You know, so that's a huge benefit.
The General Assembly did is that they're allowing.
Yeah.
Under eighteen people to.
And they're getting, they're getting almost at already Hoosier Hills right now, that's why I thought we could flip it.
Exactly.
Cause they're getting the same thing, yeah, they're watching out with associates at every thirty.
Agree, yeah.
So are you happy with the number of classrooms we would be gaining at the junior high?
I, I don't know, I would like to know, you know, from, you know, you know, what the anticipated need is.
Right.
Gonna be for the next, even if it's.
Well, we had to, we had the, uh, demographic, two demographic studies done. And the last one said it'd be slow, steady growth.
Right, there's also big bubbles that come through that can be difficult to deal with. So we, so I, I don't know, I don't know what those projections are. I don't know how many classrooms we're short now, that if we had these classrooms, we need these classrooms. So what are we short now, what is anticipated being short?
Well, what, if, if the journey's, does move into the junior high, what's that? Where's that gotta go?
How many kids are we talking about, Jerry, how many?
Off the top of my head, I don't know exactly.
We're not talking a hundred kids, no.
No.
Like they, it's minimal growth, yeah.
Yeah, so you're not, you don't need six thousand square feet.
Right, no.
Well, let me see if we can figure out a way to, um, give you some data on that.
So like. High school, I, yeah, I think the same thing, what, what would he use? If, if, if we did three classrooms, what's he gonna use, those four? If he did six classrooms, what are you gonna do?
And I, I talked to the band director when we came in, he said that.
And I, I talked to the band director when we came in, he said that, that has opened up, even though it's the same space, it's opened up a lot more uses, taking all that.
Good. Well, we'll, we'll, tell them what you think about this plan. We'll, we'll, we'll gather some data that will help us to determine the specific needs for how much classroom space we're going to need. Find that out and that'll be the priority. And then, once you have that information, that'll dictate how big of a space we have for band and choir.
Partially, because we also have those other competing interests with, you know, the HVAC and, and all those other things too that are on the list. That, so there, there's a lot of competing interests for that. I don't, I think there's enough competing interests that we need to scale those back.
We need to what?
Scale those back.
Yeah, okay.
And make.
Scale what back?
For instance, the, the performing arts, the band and choir, instead of being, they're being tremendously larger than they are right now. That make them larger, but not to the, that extent. And then, for instance, if you did that, then on option one, you could put the two labs.
Right.
Over there and then have the six classrooms there. Um, and, you know, for the same dollars.
That's, that's my concern. I mean, if you're adding that space. You're gonna add a whole new space for, I don't like option one from the standpoint that, I don't like to use option two and use that space appropriately. It has, has flexibility there, cause you're not changing the footprint, other than the inside on option two.
Is it not being connected to our innovative learning center an issue?
Option two, it would not be. Correct.
Right, right.
Yeah, option two, we're not having another thumbnail hanging out there. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know that there'd be a huge benefit to connecting them.
Are they gonna be operated kind of separately and separate kind of thing?
I don't think so.
I don't know what you mean by separately.
Well, I mean, they're separated.
Shut it down. For the rest of the school, it can be shut down.
Yes.
Yeah, the labs could be, the labs could be used during the day if, if open.
Right.
Yeah.
So the other question is, are you looking to make, uh, you want the HVAC to be more of a priority and put more money towards that?
I, I'd like to go back there and look at some of these numbers again to.
Yeah.
To figure out what we, you know, we're cutting out to make that happen. Um, so I'm not sure exactly.
Okay.
I, I just want some time to look at it.
Okay.
But I don't know that I got the answer. Is there a benefit to having the labs connected to innovative learning center? Would there be cross use between those spaces to where if they were side by side, it would be more efficient than if they were, um, separated by, well, you'd have to basically go out to the commons and back down or go outside to get there, unless you put in a separate hallway.
I think they're really separate programs.
Yeah, you already got your, you already got your entrance for the innovative learning center already established. And you don't have to change the footprint either, underneath. That's another, that's a cost there, I assume. If you did option one, you gotta do all the underneath stuff again too. You don't have to do it with option two for that, for having a classroom space. It's already there.
There's no utilities there for that. Well, but if you are scaling back how big this is.
No, I mean, you're, all you're.
I'm saying it's scaled back to this. Right.
You don't have to do anything. So if you go over here, you have to do all new infrastructure.
Right, well, which you have to do over here too. I'm just saying, take it from here and put it here instead.
Yeah, I just have to do math on it too. That kinda gets your point there. If you cut off, I mean, if you cut off.
I mean, I don't particularly like it because I don't like the fact that the overhead tour now would be a long way away from, or a lot longer way away at least from the auditorium. But I don't know that that's horrible either. So, all right.
I would like to go to junior high, but I haven't been in there forever.
Oh, I remember.
I wasn't aware of a point, you talked about twenty twenty, I think Matt mentioned earlier, kind of like, we'll be a little closer to what the projects are. And you start talking about the border. I mean, it's, we couldn't spend forty million dollars next year if we wanted us to, I don't think. We gotta get it designed, we gotta get it bid, we gotta get started, so it, it might not be twenty twenty, it might be eighteen and, you know, twenty two, or yeah, it might be a different combination. So we can, we can run some cash flows, so you can rightsize that, unless there's a financial reason to borrow more than you need in twenty twenty six. Which there might be, but I, I just offer that we can run scenarios, once we have a scope of work and you borrow what you need and no more than you need.
Exactly. No, that'd be perfect.
I mean, I'm thinking in twenty six, we're gonna have at best eight months of construction. Right, I mean, we're, yeah, we're gonna, right, we're gonna use the first four months to get the design together and bid for the first phase of whatever we do. It's gonna take longer to design the new addition than it is to do the, the roofing project particularly.
Jerry, at some point, this is, and this last time was very good, about, we need to share this with, we need to share the proposed additions with the public. So they see what's coming out, cause, cause I've been getting some calls about, well, what are they even thinking about doing? I haven't seen anything in concrete yet. But I don't know if we're ready to do that yet. I'm, I'm sensing we need another work session.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Probably sooner rather than later, but.
Well, we have, we have to gather some information, like Dana said, kind of process what we've talked about tonight, uh, and then come back together.
Couple weeks down the road. Okay.
But I think that, again, if part of the, there was two goals, one, to figure out what we were gonna do, but the other part was the bonding part.
Right.
And I think there's pretty much a general consensus that we should probably go forward with forty million, because it looks like we're gonna need at least that. How we get that out just depends on the cash flows.
Soon as that, soon as that graph to get to, Jerry, if we did, I would like to see that again back.
Okay, no problem.
And you had, you had it at the six dollar or six percent mark? You, everything you do is at a higher end, right?
Yeah.
As far as projected bond rates.
Yeah, so what we put in the resolution was seven percent. Everything I run for my charts is at five percent, which is still a percent higher.
Yeah, that, that is helps me visualize it better.
Well, yeah, yep, I'll get that to you.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Anything else?
Gotta throw one more thing in.
No.
But school construction, so there's certain things that we really like to do during the summer. So as you're deliberating and prioritizing, there are, there are projects that we would like, like roofing, we'd rather do roofing as much as we can during the summer or the shoulder months, you know. We could probably start the new addition.
You don't like to do that in January?
We could start the new addition about, well, let's say, ten out of twelve months, we can start the new addition. So you have a little more time to deliberate and design that, but.
Is there kind of like a little email you could send us?
I was wondering.
Try not to make the decisions for you, but there are some things that I would recommend to get going on, if you're, if you're convinced you wanna do at least some roofing. I'd love to pull the trigger and have Misha start putting the drawings together and do some roofing ASAP, uh, so that we can bid it, you know, right at the beginning of the first of years.
Right.
Get, you wanna bid the project when everybody's hungry and struggling. We're talking about April being the best for bleachers. We wanna bid there somewhere in January, February. If we're doing a roofing project, it's summer twenty twenty six. So it's not, it's not urgent, but it's something we want, we need some decisions in the next thirty days of maybe that first phase.
Right.
We do need to address the bleachers. That's also more urgent priorities.
You mean the one in April?
Well.
The April bleachers?
Junior high and high school.
Okay, but those are coming from previous bonds?
Well, the, the.
The junior high.
It's not the high school.
Right now, right now, I have the high school bleachers coming out of the GEO bond.
Oh.
Which GEO bond, the new one?
The two thousand twenty two GEO.
So those are out of.
And the junior high bleachers coming out of the two thousand ten construction.
Right, I just, I mean, in all seriousness, it'd be quite a lot the price difference.
Well, but the other thing too, you gotta think about is, you need the bleachers for.
Basketball season.
Basketball season.
Yeah.
And.
True.
So you're kinda stuck in waiting till after. Basketball season. What's that?
I don't think we could have a meeting before the first game.
No.
We do have a meeting with Lee and company this week regarding the high school.
Yeah, I was thinking about the high school, you got three sets of bleachers. You got two bottom, all the bottom and that top on the other side, I forgot about that. Is that what we're talking about?
Is that just getting a price or bidding or doing, or what?
Quote, they are, they're a consortium, so.
Oh.
Oh, so once, once they. You don't have to have three.
The quote came with the COOs from a co-op, I feel like we already had it, it's a co-op price that we received.
Good.
Good.
And then the people that are coming there, they're looking at the entire project and then broke down by individual levels.
But yeah, Brad's point. Are we talking about both the bottoms and one of the tops? Did one top's permanent?
On the permanent side, we're gonna take a look and see if we can, um, what's it called, recap the seats.
Didn't we recap them?
We had, like, five years ago. They've been recapped, but.
They had been recapped.
They were wood.
Five years ago?
They had, yeah. Really? I've been here six, seven years.
I've only been here three.
I don't know. I, I, I remember when they were, I remember when they were wood, but that might have, that might have been nineteen eighty. I remember nineteen sixty five.
We're gonna take a look at all of it.
The wood was still there since sixty five, yeah.
We're gonna take a look at all of it, but the priority or the movable.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
All right, anything else?
No.
I'm ready to go home.
All right, leaving the jury.